Okay, we are back. Um, we are now on to number five. We're looking at a resolution number twenty-three dash sixteen, an intergovernmental agency agreement with Columbia County relating to contract law enforcement services, Columbia County Sheriff's Office, the CSO. City Manager Alexander Rains and Chief Steven Lugal to hear.
Good evening, sorry for being late. Um, so we've been working on this for quite some time. As you are aware, we have been newer officers to the training capacity. County has really stepped up and supported us in this rebuild. Um, what this IGA will do is give us a little breathing room so that we can cover shifts that we otherwise can't cover due to playing the academy of officers and field training and officers that may be out. Um, to create a relationship builder, like thank the sheriff's office. They have been more supportive than I possibly could have ever imagined, and this will get us fully staffed.
So, um, it gives us the ability, yes, you know, they're always, they're there and they come and help. Um, a lot of times with this be specifically, you will, um, ask for support, an officer, and then they will come and be on our city premises or shift.
Correct, so we'll sit down and iron what the schedule's gonna look like, fill in the gaps, so that we have more.
And of course, this doesn't obligate them to fill, um, you know, those shifts, but it does make it available to them if our officers have passed on said overtime shifts.
Shorter shift and you feel we really need a shift, you go to our officers, offer overtime.
Correct.
How to cover it, if not, then we'll go to the county and see if they can cover it. And it's not an on-call issue, it's, it's an officer.
Correct.
Um, so to your point, Alex, they may, right? So it's not obligated, they're not obligated.
Correct.
Uh, where I was putting on the third, whereas, um, it says, whereas the county and they may through, and so it's almost like a may. It's not necessarily that they're obligated, but the way it sounds here, it seems like they will, or they, the county, through the county, provide services. And I'm reading everything else, it's not an obligation if they have the manpower. And just, I'm, you know, just to clarify, this is not someone that just got off a, you know, eight to ten hour shift? That's pretty much refreshing, it's gonna take on another ten hours?
Correct. Yeah, when we first kind of conceptualized this concept, it was, I went to my deputies, I said, you, would you guys have the bandwidth to work an overtime shift? So coming on one of their days off, fresh and relaxed and ready to go, and spend the shift here in Scappus taking calls. Um, vast majority said they would, so that's why, why we were forward with this.
Probably have rules and laws regarding the amount of hours somebody can work in a row, like double shifts or overtime, right? I mean, within the county.
Absent emergency circumstances, yes.
And they're still governed by that if shifted.
Correct. And we wouldn't, I wouldn't want to bring my guys out from doing their, their normal job to come here.
And without this agreement, we, you can't, we can't do this. Can't just, you have someone to come in and work an eight-hour shift and them come and do it, we need this agreement to give us that opportunity.
Yes.
Yes. And they're ten-hour shifts, just for clarification.
Everything, and, um, and also just to clarify, when the, uh, when the officer is in Scappus, they'll be covered on their, because they're contractors, right? Independent contractor, it'll still be covered under city's workers' compensation?
No.
No.
It will, we're not in the sheriff's office.
It will. Okay, I thought I read it, it wasn't, okay.
Um, I've got a couple of questions. So do you have any similar agreements with other cities in the county?
Sort of, so we currently provide complete police services for the city of Clatscanai, but that's different. So this will be the first, the first kind of piecemeal, if you will, contract that we've had.
Then how much do we anticipate trying to utilize the sheriff's staff?
It really depends, we have to.
Depends on a monthly basis.
Yeah, we'll have to sit down and look and see what's not covered and, uh, you know, I would imagine that we'll probably put the schedule out weeks, if not a month in advance, so that everyone is aware. That, you know, that's, once this is signed, then that's what lieutenant and I will do, we'll start looking at our, our scheduling.
Okay, so that'll be kind of a constant coordination.
Yes.
Yes.
Opportunity, okay.
Fill in the last eight months, there has been a time where like, I wish I had that ability.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Yes. So is the goal here to cover all shifts that we would otherwise have if we were fully staffed, or what is, what is the goal in using the sheriff's office to augment?
To, to currently cover the shifts that we're missing.
Okay.
So with, with officers not here, with officers out, um, we don't always have the ability, um, to cover those shifts. You know, we have to, being in this unique situation, we really do have to be cognizant of that work-family balance, and we don't want to burn our guys out. Um, just like the sheriff's office doesn't want to burn their guys out, so, you know, I don't want to look like where we have to deny vacation or, you know, force people to work overtime. So having this kind of gives our guys a breather, where they're not getting burned out either.
Okay, um, what happens if somebody calls in sick? Is that still an issue where you have to notice it and give first try to refusal for, I mean, are, are we gonna try to fill those shifts? Like, is, are, how is that gonna work?
So, yes.
Emergency leave per se?
So, so right now, it's a little, it's a little difficult to do that because, um, you know, we have two officers in FTEP. I can realize that within the next few weeks, those shifts will be covered by our guys should they want to take overtime. But, but, um, I'm looking more for the shifts that we really can't fill. And, you know, the, where we know someone's gonna be out long-term, filling in those gaps.
Okay. And then sheriff, do you have an idea of how willing your folks are gonna be to fill shifts?
Well, when I polled them initially, they, the vast majority was on board with doing it. But when the rubber meets, hits the road, I guess we'll find out for sure.
Do you have officers do overtime for you?
Yes.
They accept shifts?
Yes.
Um, so I would hope they still want to. Um, on call, we still have sometimes officers on call.
We do.
This wouldn't replace an on-call that, that shift typically unless you felt we need someone here.
It, it, it's not going to replace it right now.
Mr. Mayor, um, Counselor Miller had said, what if someone's sick? I believe in this, it states that we would give ten days prior the request to the sheriff's department. So it wouldn't be like the day before, two days before, it's, it's not, it's, we're planning ahead on where these, when these gaps will be happening.
Yeah, that would be correct. Last-minute book-offs would be our responsibility to fill, and that would create too much undue pressure on the sheriff's office.
Absolutely.
But still, by that same token, sorry to interrupt, but by that same token, if push came to shove and there was a real crunch, we could still offer it out. Um, and it may or may not happen, but I would be, the chief and I talk almost weekly anymore. So we're, we're in pretty constant communication.
And then, um, chief had mentioned, you know, we're in the state of rebuilding, and, um, this agreement is only effective until the end of, of June twenty-two-four. This is really just a temporary, um, agreement in place to get us through these, um, these months while we have new officers being trained, getting, um, fully qualified and ready to be out on their own, when we unfortunately do have officers out um, longer term for other circumstances happening. Um, so this isn't, this isn't something that's going to last forever. This really is just part of this rebuilding, and we realize that there's some gaps that need to be filled, and, and we appreciate your partnership with that.
Thank you, and, you know, speaking as a Scappus resident for a second, I couldn't be more happy with the partnership that we have formed with the city of Scappus and Scappus Police Department, it's really refreshing to see.
I feel you.
And on Megan's point, um, the contract would be up June thirtieth, and if, if there was to be an extension for whatever reason, that wouldn't require any different resolution. Resolution's not a dated thing, it just says, we're authorizing you to go into this agreement with.
Um, I think at that point, we would want to have reauthorization from council, um, you know, this is obviously, you know, it, it's an important partnership, it's a big deal. Um, and so I think we wouldn't necessarily, you know, want to come back and get basically your blessing to extend at that point.
The feeling is right now, with everybody going through training and academies and, and new hires, um, we're moving in the right direction to be in fully staffed. And would hope that in June, we should be fully staffed and operational.
We are fully, I mean, because we are fully staffed, we're just not fully operational. So we're hoping that essentially by then, we would be fully operational, um, you know, fingers crossed with everything moving the way it's going, so.
Mr. Mayor? Oh, sorry. Um, Counselor Santiago had brought something up about, um, workers' compensation. Just to clarify, um, vacation time, insurance coverage, all of those things are still the responsibility of the sheriff's office. The only thing that the city of Scappus is going to do is pay them that hourly wage for working that ten-hour shift. Other than that, we're still under the umbrella of the sheriff, we're just making sure that they get a check for the.
Yes, and then extends to oversight, um, they're still under the supervision of the sergeants, the sheriff's, um, sergeants, so, um, they're literally just covering, I think it's priority, uh, one and two called, and then they, they wouldn't even be enforcing our municipal code, they'd really just be focusing on those responding types of calls, and they would still be completely under supervision of the sheriff.
And vehicles and equipment?
That's all ours.
Questions?
I, I do have one thing, um, the, the resolution, it, uh, section one calls out Exhibit A. And, um, this technical, the technical thing, um, I don't see Exhibit A anywhere in the document. Did I miss it?
So I think it's referring to the agreement itself as Exhibit A.
Right, I'm just saying, it's not called out just for technical reasons, you know, you're calling out on Exhibit A, and I'm just, or it's a reference, right? Yes, it can be called, attached C one oh-five dash twenty-two-three?
I think as long as we state that it is the agreement on the record, I think I would imagine we're fine.
And we can, yeah.
I'll be taking this in front of the, my commissioners on Wednesday, so Wednesday morning.
So for it to become fully executed or operational, they're gonna have to approve it too, um, okay.
I've already spoken with, with them kind of offline about this, they know it's coming.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that council approve resolution number twenty-three dash sixteen as presented and authorize the city manager to execute a final IGA with the Columbia County Sheriff's Office.
And are you gonna make me read the whole?
I won't.
We have it first by Councilwoman, President Gryson, to approve resolution twenty-three sixteen.
Who's recording it, I mean.
Authorizing city manager to execute a final IGA with the Columbia County Sheriff's Office, any second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Miller, any discussion? See none, all those in favor state by saying aye. Aye, pose. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you guys' time, thank you very much.
Sorry to keep you waiting in the park. Okay, I didn't get my coat. It's like, whatever the mayor says for time, he just times it by two or three.
Order of ninety-one twenty. Exhibit A.
That's, I think that, is that it?
Hey, we're, uh, no.
We're getting there, one left.
Back to our work session, number six, city of Scappus Personnel Policy Handbook Update twenty-two-three. This is work session number one of, oop, city manager Alexander Rains and Assistant City Manager Isaac Butman.
Um, so unlike a lot of cities, our personnel policy handbook is actually approved by council. This is a little unusual, but that does mean that we have to come before you, or try to come before you at least once a year, bring updates. This is gonna be a lot, um, the reason is that HR law, policies, best practices change pretty much every day, I get multiple bulletins with new laws, things like paid leave organ happen, so these are always evolving, so we stay in compliance, we, we follow the law, you know, if law says we have to change our practices for anti-harassment or paid leave, we comply with that. It's just that with so many changes, I would literally be here every single council meeting with a list of things that we would need to go through. Um, it's not just efficient, so what we do is, once a year, we go through, we look at all the things that have been noted as not being functional, maybe new situations arose with an employee regarding workers' compensation, and that's no longer legal, something like paid leave organ. And we go through and we add all the changes, bring it before you, um, kind of hang it all out to dry, and get really clear about what's changing, what's not, and, um, now where you have discretion and what level of discretion. A lot of this stuff for you tonight, sections. discretionary. Do a full-blown discretionary, it's all of our anti-harassment. It's not bullying. These, go through it. What I've done is, um, need to do for. Every single page will kind of have a margins, you'll see, or brackets. The line. Green's gonna have most discretion, orange is gonna be a little bit highly recommended. Or red is gonna be sections where, or this and touching. Just gonna jump in. Um, so the first two, three pages, they're kind of the welcome, these are added by the city to kind of.
Loved that, by the way, that personalized it, softened it up.
It's one of the hard parts.
Yeah, good job, Alex.
It's a credit for that, but thank you.
Good job writing it.
Yeah, right.
Writing it, Alex.
Governments, not required, but I think it. Governments here, a lot of times we get. Our. As what forces, they need to go.
That newsletters. He knows how it's.
Okay, section two, EEO. This is gonna be pages and pages. CIS is our insurer, issue a new policy book every. There's changes. They've completely rewritten the section to comply with laws, maybe they had the phrasing organization, you've reviewed it, it is significantly similar to. All basically. This whole section talks about. Right. Nation, shouldn't. This goes on.
Don't touch the red.
Yes, it, pretty much, yes.
I do have a question, and, um, this talk about harassment and bullying outside of the workplace as well, like can the handbook extend to, oh, I mean, with social media and?
Does talk about cyberbullying and some things like that, so there is some, yes, that you would consider like off-premise behavior or off-work hours, that doesn't mean that this isn't taking place, I mean, you can still have that occur between employees and.
This is a contract. Be fair enough, but it's, you're saying, we're gonna provide a work, every day, police officer calls. But I think it's games that get fully. Social media, it's very similar.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking towards each other. Right, but, but employees couldn't do that, but what we're saying is if we, yeah, if, if that's not acceptable, and if we became aware that that was occurring, even if it wasn't happening at work during work hours, that would still be an issue.
Okay.
Autumn of one thirty-two, about cyberbullying.
There's another policy section on. That usage. There. There, there is some work language. But as a member of the city of Scappus staff, represent the city. People know. Off work. Fires are. On that night. I have a. But.
We have a social media policy, though, if I remember.
Do, in a separate spot.
Daniel. Okay, yeah, I know there are a lot of limitations, though, too, with, uh, regulating off-duty conduct, too.
Yes, some of the things we, I think we look at are talking about on social media. Very. Times it's. Again, it's. This is, I'm not sure that we do this. Yeah, right.
Hmm.
Jurors. Sharp. Changing area. The first time we get to a green mark is gonna be taken by five hundred. Um, the big change in the first bit is just aligning the language to our CBAs, so our CBAs. Probationary period, this is, this is really just the syntax. What it does is it helps us manage across the different group, team groups, but when we're talking, we're. A lot of. Um, we did redefine the probationary period of. That's. To make sure that's a little clearer, the timeframes that we're looking at for probation. And, um, it's a little more plus to extend. Make sure it's. Well, I'm significant creative absence. We expected six months that we wouldn't have. By weight, they're building, uh, they didn't have the opportunity to enter the job. Pause is a little more plus. And employees make sure that we're the right.
Is that the one hundred eighty days?
And there's a section in red. Significant. Scappus determines that created is a lot less. Re-evaluate. We, of course, would. Those kind of things, you know, this isn't. We would. Wouldn't, we would just, and we're gonna extend your probation, all right? Employee classifications, um, this is, we, this could go to benefits depending on how. Really, it's just classifying. Don't have any temporary employees right now that we have. Some that we. That can be a great. In work week, we're suggesting a change, um, the work week is originally aligned to these Scappus police. So the way that Scappus. Is. Scheduled is that the overlap day is, we have officers on Sunday through Wednesday, and like, everybody's here on Wednesday, they can stop needing policy manual, sign to that, it's really different than the way that every, every other organization. Um, in terms of what it does if that. If that's payroll processes, that. I've seen is that all of the new employees. Do I get? So, just shift. Past due. Bring, we shift. Day through Sunday work week. So again, just kind of a stat. Easier to understand. I've seen employees. Odd. So. It's just makes it, our expectations are. Meal, meal periods and rest breaks, these are set by law, all I did was. Hope to make it a little bit.
You don't have any, I mean, really, nobody other than police officers work over the weekend.
I think a lot of us are emergency responders, in a way, not, they are, but our main break is. Terms of regular work. Officers do, and then our treatment plan, our operations that have to happen, a water testing. We fill chemical, make sure the policy. There's always somebody on. Operations to make sure that that water. Actually. Even four, about four hours on Saturday. Agreement, that's for our shifts, we're splitting across. Have them weekend shift in four hours. One and four, two, and then. Kind of compensate extra here, or is this overtime or not, and so there was a lot of struggle, it's shifting the work. That's that. Um, and us proposing to ship more. All the other. I'd. I'd say. On section E, uh, rest breaks for the expression, there has been. Need to be a lot of. Uh, we took our language, it's pretty much not guided by CIS to make sure.
You don't want to know what my conditions were like, so. Under a desk in the dark. Keynote on the door.
Um, overtime, so there are significant changes in this section.
Say more, you're welcome.
And, uh, so we have, we did not have any non-union employees. Uh, the industry standard. Wouldn't say it's a standard, but a lot of police departments, all sergeants are exempt. They are. Falls we have. Our sergeants get called a lot. It was a recognition of that, a lot of people. Hey, they're exempt. Recognize that. Regularly. Right? Over Alex or any of our other, Valerie except, these calls are a little bit less frequent, uh, having to drive to. Yeah, but. Sergeant's name, so, and we added. Time to sergeants. Plus we. Like, a. At a later time, so the language in here, they just describes all the sergeants, for example, salary. Overtime, get paid it, big deal here is that we're not, that, thank, we're just out. Track ours, that's every liability. It's found that a lot of times, hanging out the overtime.
They're working overtime, Sunday night and Monday morning, that is a break, so the hours would be the entire week, and then next several hours would be.
So overtime's paid to them. That if you start getting in Sunday night, it, man, after the, I have to go. You make sure, like, when things come up like that. Of. That's one of the things that is really getting HR. Regularly, that's for all mistakes, always. Time, I think. And it's, we really do pay attention to make sure it'll be paid. Think it thinks.
Um, on F, where it does say overtime, is that a floating R below time and a half?
It's, it's an R. Isaac, can you check that you have a red dot behind your mic?
Not anymore.
There you go. There you go. Thank you.
All right.
All right. I'm keeping requirements. Um. There technically is some flexibility here. It's highly recommended we don't touch this section. We actually have a duty to keep time for our employees. Um, the way this is written has been working. Um, it helps to make sure the employees are tracking their time correctly. If they don't, ultimately, the responsibility is on us. Ah. Incurred expenses and reimbursements. This would be probably the most touched section. Um, we actually have flexibility here. We do not have to pay per diem for employees that go out to conferences. Uh, it's standard practice to pay that. Helps employees feel like they can go get the trainings that they need, that we value them going to get that knowledge and bring it back. Um, we come up, came across a couple of situations where, um, things weren't as clear as they needed to be. Um, particularly in the area of overnight stays. And so there's a lot of definition, definition here about what. Um. What makes a trip eligible for an overnight stay? And the way we approach this is we kind of made some concentric circles of time and distance away from the city of Scapus, what that would look like, and thought through what a conference looks like. So. Many of you know, it's then at five or six, by the time you get out of there, maybe at six thirty, there's a dinner that goes till eight, maybe eight thirty, and then after that, maybe, you know, people are going to somewhere else to continue talking. A lot of times, those are some of the most meaningful experiences. That's when people make relationships, they can talk about the real issues happening at work, they can. Those brains. So if we have an employee that's out till, you know, they can get up at six, they drive in, by the time that they start to leave the event space, it's nine at night. Having them drive for an hour, maybe an hour and a half of them doesn't necessarily seem reasonable. So we kind of debated, you know, what's the correct hour, you know, distance and driving, or is it time? So we created some metrics in here about. What we think are reasonable times to be able to drive. So we think that a reasonable time to be able to drive back to home, where you report from, is an hour. Um, after a conference. So if your conference ends at seven or eight and you're done driving home to be at nine, we thought was reasonable. It's an hour and a half of driving and you're getting home closer to ten. That just allows our supervisors and our employees to know when they can and can't be reimbursed. And you can see by the very limited amount of, um. Writing that's in, in black, there wasn't a lot of, um. Thought given to this before. One of the things we try to do is be really clear about, um. What it is that we're asking our employees and what it is we're giving them.
Um, on the meals. Uh. If no overnight stay is part of your required travel, only lunch will be reimbursed. So, for example, if you leave your residence in the morning and return that evening, only lunch will be reimbursable. It's kind of rough.
Some dinner.
Yeah, it's, can you throw in another meal?
Can we?
I mean, I travel a lot. That would be hard, like, if I were held to something like that. You throw in, yeah, a long trip back and forth, that's a suggestion.
How, how often does that happen?
Not very.
Not, not, there's not too many conferences that are one day that go into the evening.
Well, a lot of times, though, the conferences are multiple days.
Yeah.
To be honest, and so they're already staying overnight.
Is there any? Reason they'd say, God, I'm not going to get fed tonight, I'm going to stay another night.
Well, the other thing, though, is too, is that. Well, the other thing that was too, is that, um, sometimes the conferences, they do feed you also.
Yeah, for the multiple day ones, they do. I don't, I haven't come across one where it's a single day that goes from the morning to the evening. I mean, I, I don't, if we had one that went into the evening and it was over at five.
I haven't seen one like that, but we can, I mean, we can change it. I don't know if I've seen one like that, but.
We could, we could write it in with some constraints, maybe, about making sure that it's, you know, it goes until a certain time, kind of like we did with the others, where it's. You know, if it's, if meals aren't provided and it's a evening conference, maybe some language, is that kind of what you're looking for?
Yeah.
Than an hour drive.
It's more than an hour drive, you're staying overnight. So then you're, you're, you're.
Yeah, you're. You're covered. And no.
Um. Paid monthly, obviously, if the, if the twenty-fifth is, uh, twenty-fifth is on a Sunday, they get it Friday morning, Saturday, depending.
It's on a Sunday, though, yeah, it's the last working day before the end of the month. So if it's. The most complicated one is usually Christmas, so if, like. Christmas is on a Friday, and you have Thursday and Friday off, and so I have to have it out by Wednesday. Messy.
Uh, it's always the last working day.
Last working day.
So.
We haven't missed, we haven't missed a payroll in longer than I've been here. We've never. That, that's a big deal. Uh, payroll policies, um. Few changes in here. Um. One, the handbook didn't really talk about direct deposit being our primary payment method. This is really a big deal, um, in terms of efficiency. Uh, when I got here, Alex would, in the morning, come in and she'd have a stack of checks like this.
Mm-hmm.
And we've been working to shrink that. Uh, you don't have to come in, sign checks. Um, so for payroll, in terms of getting those checks to people, every, almost everybody uses. I don't, I don't even, I don't, I don't pay by check. No one has asked for a paper.
I think Michael actually might have been one of the last people that got a live check.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think I've done a live check since I got here, and that's, that's two years. Um, so that's in there. If employees want a paper check, by law, we have to give them the option to do that. Free to do that, we can do that, I have checks. Um, it just makes things a lot quicker. And then the other one would be the electronic pay stubs. So. This is something where employees have to opt into an electronic pay stub versus a paper pay stub. Um, so what we're doing is we're. Have to specifically do it, so this will be added to the onboarding process where they'll have the option to. In, we're going to give them the option when they onboard, opt into it in electronic pay stub. They don't do that, I have to print a paper one, but again, thirty-seven pay stubs doesn't seem like a lot, but it's every single month, thirty-seven envelopes, thirty-seven pieces of paper. How much time to make sure it prints, fold them, stuff them, seal them. Kind of guys them.
Just the stubs.
Just the stubs. So we have a, um, an electronic pain, a electronic service. I don't know what it's called, ESS. Employee Service System.
Oh, I'm employed by them. The substitute.
Oh, so that's, that's our.
Be a different.
Yeah, that's our acronym for our payroll. So our payroll system, when I generate payroll, automatically generates an electronic version of the pay stub. So an employee logs in with their personal email, they can access their pay stubs and W twos forever, as long as we have the system. So what we're trying to do is get them to log in to get their pay stubs. Um, we instituted this. Last year, about nine months ago, and I think I do six paper stubs now, and then anybody that's on leave, I just automatically send them a stub. But they're on a, on a family leave, if they're out sick, and I've been out sick for a week, um, should like, I just make sure that everybody gets their stubs. Haven't had any pushback. Always seem to like the fact that they can, now that they've left employment, they can get those records without having to keep. Think it's pretty, pretty standard now to get electronic.
I think also you do your annual, like, um, if you, uh, turning your W, um. In taxes, that's so much easier just to download it or print instead of waiting for you guys to mail it.
And they get them a lot faster.
Yeah.
Can get them almost immediately as soon as we're done. Uh, statements regarding pay practices, uh, again, this is required to let employees know, um, their recourse. Pay advances. Um. This is a completely discretionary policy. Uh, unlike a lot of employers, we pay monthly, um, just because of the time payroll takes. So this is an option that, um, a couple of folks use to kind of get through the month. Sometimes new employees come in and it'll be sixty days before they get a paycheck or something, because the way that they left their prior job, and so this is kind of that opt-out where they, they can take a draw for a percentage of their wages. Kind of make it through the month. As annoying it is for me to run through payroll because it's a whole nother payroll cycle, I think it's actually valuable to our employees, especially the new ones. Um. Really thinking about, like, utility one here where. Compared to a service job, you're making good money, but maybe you haven't had a job in a couple of weeks and you come in and it's like the third of the month and you're not going to get paid till the last of the month, so you have a six-week gap. That can be really rough. So, um, it's kind of a way that we help employees transition, and again, some folks take a draw regularly just to help them kind of budget. And, uh. The last couple of sections, paid, uh, our reporting changes to, um, personal data. Um. I don't need to know where to send checks and. To call if there's an emergency, so, standard. Uh, performance reviews, um, this is also discretionary, but, um, as we were talking about earlier, uh, it's really important. That's expectations, so just make sure our employees are doing what they need to be doing. To record. And, uh, that's all I've got for tonight, in terms of the hand, the manual. Actions.
Thank you.
Uh, the next, the next.
We'll be back with more soon.
Yeah.
That's going to be, there'll be.
There's seven sections and two is automatically all done, why do we only do?
Next for our.
It's, yeah, well, so we, so A, we already knew there was a lot of other stuff on the agenda tonight, so we were trying to be mindful of the time. Um, and we knew that this section was probably going to take a little less time because a lot of it was, you know, basically like, hey, this is the language we need. The next one will take more time, we're going to try to be mindful about putting a little less on the agenda overall, um, because there will be more discretionary, um, sections and probably a bit more kind of meat for you to maybe think about or, you know, want to have them put on, so. Um, we thought this would be a kind of a nice starting point, just to kind of get through some sections.
The next one, the next meeting.
Yep, the next meeting, it'll be all four sections. Um, in the handbook, it's about sixty pages, so by the time it's all compiled, it'll probably look more like a hundred and fifty, with all the edits. It'll be a lot heavier, that's going to be all of our time off, it'll be all of our discretionary policies, termination, um, it's really the, everything you haven't seen here. That you would find in a standard employment agreement and you think of is going to be in there.
And that's where you'll also see things like the addition of, um.
Juneteenth.
Like Juneteenth, longevity pay, vaca, um, higher vacation accruals, and things that would then, um, mirror the ASME CBA that we've discussed in the past.
And one of the things, the reason we're kind of phasing it out is that we are phasing it through our employees, too, instead of just dumping ninety-page handbook and saying, hey, here you go, here, just so you're aware, this is the changes, we're kind of going. Section by section, letting everybody see it, have time to give us feedback.
Unions are getting a crack at it as well.
Getting time to look at the sections, um, because some of these, some of these items are man, could be mandatory, so just some bargaining, so it kind of makes it a little more reasonable to get through if there's, there's something that comes up. Um, it doesn't slow us down, but it allows us time to kind of make sure people have a reasonable-sized chunk to read and internalize instead of trying to read a ninety-page.
Um, so if we do, we'll look at this a little more, and if I have any changes, I could talk to you about them next time, even this first section.
Yeah, and then the final version, um, will be a lot more clean, and it won't have any floating Rs or Hs. Um. But it'll, it'll be very clear with track changes and all the, uh.
Mayor, have a question.
Yes.
So I, I have a question, because it, this seems a little bit awkward because we don't have anything to do with daily operations and the staff, so has. The fact that this comes before us been reviewed more recently by legal counsel to see.
Actually.
Almost feels like it's creating.
Yeah, it, it actually hasn't. Um, it's in our code, I think, I mean, you could amend the code.
It's in the municipal code, I think it's two, four, eight. Um, again, like I said, it, this is really unique, partly because it does reach into operations, partly because, you know, this, these changes alone are, you know, a long time coming, so we have to. Can't change this book, right? So we have to know, oh, this section doesn't work, or this is the new law we have to follow. If somebody leaves in the middle of the year, like, I, when I came in, I didn't get a, like, oh, here's all the changes, I just got annual, and some of that stuff hadn't been cor, isn't correct, and so the girl who was before me, she was. She knew it wasn't right and was operating under the new assumptions, but I didn't know, and so there was some mix-ups and confusions. So this, this is really. Operationally challenging to make sure that this is up to date, so that, like, if I was out, somebody, supervisor needed references, they're getting the right information. No, it hasn't been reviewed by legal, I, I don't know.
Well, I, I just.
Know that it needs to come before us.
Want to clarify that, because. I mean, it, it honestly, a lot of this stuff is all. At the directive of legal counsel, like, I, I just paid a law firm to do my book, and I just put in, like, they're like, you just do the placeholders here, but changing anything that they.
Yeah, they pretty much have to.
So. If we don't have anything to do with staff and operations of staff, it just kind of seems awkward that we, it would, a policy manual, a handbook would come before counsel to review and approve. When already, it's like, you're depending on legal counsel for the best legal advice anyway, so we're not qualified to say that they're wrong, so why is it even coming?
Yeah, it's just because it's in our code.
It's only because.
Good.
Could change the code, and that's something we talked about, um, you know, that I, when I first heard about that, I mentioned it to Alex, um, but we kind of, you know, that's, that's a council prerogative for them. Um.
Um, we can mail Ashley about that.
Again.
Be it to counsel, be it something that we can talk about more, or listening to if it's a bigger thing.
Are there many things in here that are? We can look at and say, yeah, we'd rather you do this than this, than that legal item.
No, there, the things that I think that there would be discretion on are the things that you've already heard, that we came before you and off and said we would like to transfer to staff, like adding Juneteenth, adding, um, you know, adding more vacation accruals, doing longevity.
Think, though, those things, in my mind, would get triggered to come before counsel because of dollar amounts. I mean, it still would, in my mind, it would still fall into, hey, you know, this costs this much, and so I would still want some sign off from that perspective, but.
Yeah, I like that.
To, but to Counselor Miller's point, I mean. He's right in the sense that a lot of that stuff, it's not. They aren't dealing with it, it is awkward, and it, it does make it harder to get, keep it up to date, so.
And I'm going to be blunt, I think that a lot of this stuff, I think what you're getting at is maybe it's wasting time because we can't touch it.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, we're, we're not going to go against what.
Take us out of the picture. I know, right? I'm like, I'm not doing that. Yeah.
As staff, I feel like I have to present the changes because you have to approve the changes, and so.
Friend test to get to bed, I mean, we can't. He's like, what?
Bring you a sleeping bag and a pillow.
Still have to go Fred Meyer, okay.
Hey. Good?
We're good.
Thank you, Isaac.
Thank you.
Anything else, less for September, but on the calendar, we have October second, council applicant interviews at six P M, followed by council meeting at seven P M. Thursday, October twelfth, planning commission at seven P M. Monday, October sixteenth, council, council work session at six P M, followed by council meeting at seven P M. Thursday, October nineteenth, E D C meeting at noon, Parks and Rec at six P M. On Saturday, October twenty-first, there is a household hazardous waste collection event at the transfer station from eight A M to two P M. Uh, fifty-year plan stakeholder advisory committee, six P M on October twenty-fourth. And October thirty-first, Scapu's Police Halloween Trick or Treat Drive Thru, four to six P M. I'll be right here.
You got good loot every year.
Right.
Me.
Calendar, uh. Updates, city manager, Alex.
Uh, just wanted to let everyone know, I think you probably already got an invite, but that the holiday dinner for council and staff is going to be on the thirteenth of December at six, so hopefully everyone can make that, um, and just please let Isaac know if you're going to bring a plus one. Um, and that's it for tonight, thanks.
You. Well.
I have nothing new tonight.
Officer Holmes?
I'll offer an update. Uh, the fifty-year committee met again, um, I guess in between our last council meeting. Um, so we have been meeting frequently, and we've got, as Mayor just read, one on the calendar next month, so we've really picked up a cadence. Um, so in this last meeting, we talked about code changes. Um. Everything from, like, uh, building heights to, like, landscaping, and so we have, but we had a very lengthy tree discussion, as Ryan alluded to. Um, so where we landed every, for every hundred and fifty, uh, feet of, uh, like, border landscaping, you'd need a tree. Um, if you had a parking lot of, like, uh, Bymart or larger, you would need to put some trees within the parking lot to start breaking up the urban heat island effect. So, um, just looking at opportunities to kind of modernize the code, bring those things in, and then also looking at, as we, uh, potentially bring in more land, if we're successful in a U G B, urban growth boundary. Some of that newer land, we might have lower commercial building heights, because the current commercial building height is quite large, I think it's sixty feet. And the candle is, like, forty? So it would be, like, much, much larger, and the candle is, like, recessed, you know, a bit in the landscaping, so, uh, we felt like that would just be a bit too imposing and maybe not, uh, with the feel. So you'll see those types of, uh, suggested code changes hopefully come before you guys in the next few months.
Thank you. Councilor Prince.
Nothing tonight.
I have. I count the sunny haggle.
All right, I'm going to read something to you guys today. Uh, this weekend, I was able to sell, I went to the Motor Center and it was with my family, and we were at the Grito, celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month, and it's kickoff. So I'm here today as a council Scapu's and a proud Latina, and I want to stress how important Hispanic Heritage Month is to our community. Hispanic. Excuse me, Hispanic Heritage Month runs from September fifteenth to October fifteenth. It is, uh, to celebrate the diversity and contribution of the Hispanic and Latinx communities in our city and across the country. This celebration is about embracing culture diversity by honoring Hispanic and Latinx neighbors. We show our commitment to diversity and inclusivity, which is essential to our community growth. As a Latina, this month reminds me of my heritage and gives me a chance to share our culture, stories and traditions. It is not just about me, it's all about all Latinos and Latinas in Scapu's. Um, as a counselor, uh, my goal is to improve our city. Celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month aligns with the desire of peace, health and happiness. We celebrate our community's, uh, cultural rich, richness. We celebrate our community's cultural richness, we make Scappus more harmonious, harmony harmonious, my, it's already really late for me to talk, and thriving for everyone. This observation isn't just about the past, it's about the future. It's about inspiring our youth and fostering understanding among all residents. Let's ensure that Scappus remains the welcoming place for everyone. I invite you all to join us in celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. Let's celebrate Hispanic and Latinx art, music, food and stories. Together we can create a more inclusive Scappus that values peace, health and happiness for all. Thank you for your support and we celebrate the richness of Hispanic and Latinx culture in our beloved city of Scappus.
Councilor Miller.
I'll try to keep this short. Last Saturday, I attended the Amani Center event and Mayor was there also. And it's an annual event. It's great. It's for raise money for the Amani Center. And I just got word a little bit ago that they, when they last checked today, they were at seventy five thousand that they had raised for that event. And there were three donors that donated thirty six hundred dollars each. And the significance of that is that is the cost for one child's full assessment, thirty six hundred dollars. But it's a great event every year. If you have not went in the past, I highly encourage you to go. It's, it's a lot of fun and it's for a great cost. Thank you.
Mister Mayor, you and I attended a childcare meeting with the county via Zoom today. And there's a lot of work being done in Columbia County to support our childcare desert that exists. Unfortunately, we're not the only county suffering from that. But as the mayor and I have said in past meetings, and he mentioned it again today. We'd love to put this on the city's radar, have a representative who's been kind of walking us through all of this information, come before council, kind of share that information and potentially next year, council can maybe focus on a council goal that would, would focus on childcare in Scappus. That's the best way to kind of get it on our radar. Tonight, we passed a resolution to support the Scappus School Bond, just educating our community on the importance of investing in our youth. And that has a lot to do with their learning environments and how safe they are and productive they are. Traffic safety occurred last week. Again, we just talk about keeping our community safe with placement of stop signs or curb parking, you know, painting and code enforcement for visual impairment. So the list is ongoing and the chief and his department are always working on it along with our public works department. I just wanted to close that many of you have probably seen that my left, Counselor Miller, has formally filed recently another lawsuit against the nine one one district. And I just want to clarify that anything written or said regarding that lawsuit is not on behalf of the city. Even the circumstances of which some representatives of our police staff were removed from a meeting. And we're not known to the staff or the council, and that Counselor Miller is just acting in his own accord when it, it comes to that lawsuit.
Thank you. At a minute five, the Amani Center event was great. The childcare meeting today was great. CET meeting, we had a board meeting last week and a lot of things are happening out there. We did get an eight hundred thousand dollar plus grant for an incubator. So O M E C is very excited about getting that started. And we did have a barbecue O M E C P C C. We had a N H R A champion out there and we had some people come and, and we had some representatives and Betsy Johnson, and it was really good to kind of talk to them. I brought my son and the race car professor from U of P and hopefully get them hooked up at O M E C because they need to build a race car for racists. So other than that, I appreciate it and have a great night.